All right, it's 6:30, we'll start the meeting. We have a couple additions to the agenda. We have a CDBG grant, fund transfer to Pittsford Village Farm. That was from the grant that we co-signed with them. And then liquor board item for outside consumption permit for Caladonia Spirits for Pittsford Village Farm event. Is that the one that got rescheduled from the rain date? Just, I don't know.
They called it off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's the same one or not.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion.
No, this is for like a ballet event or something, they said.
Oh, yep, okay. That was all we had, right? For additions to the agenda?
Make a motion. Just minutes of the agenda.
Okay. Do we have a second? All the favors say aye. All right. Anything on the meeting minutes of June 7th for the select board meeting and then liquor board minutes of the same date? No, okay. Town managers report.
All right. Ann and I attended a seminar by the Environmental Finance Center Network on setting water and sewer rates. It was last Wednesday. And we will probably be proposing new rate scenarios within the next few select board meetings or water sewer board meetings for discussion. It was actually a really, really good seminar, so. Hywood Department has removed all of the old sidewalk along Route 7 in the village. Wilt paving is scheduled to be in town to lay new asphalt starting Monday, weather permitting, of course. And it's not.
I know, it looks like a lot of rain coming up.
Hopefully. They'll probably do some compaction and stuff and it depends on how it is raining, but so it'll be done next week.
Yeah.
Helen and I met with Office Systems of Vermont. They're the folks that have our copier contracts. We were able to reduce the monthly cost by $90 and still add a large format copier scanner for the town clerk. This will allow the clerk to scan milers and surveys for researchers, so we can put them in the computer like COTS and it'll save them. Which is good, we have a ton of them downstairs in the vault, too. Our FY '23 grant list is showing a 3.1% 3.16% increase, which equals out to about $10 million, $10.9 million from last year. And our CLA is currently 84.96%, which is good for us. Tended the cedar mixer at Collecting Cafe on June 13th. It was nice to have the cafe host one of these countryhead mixers to help promote Pittsburgh and it was well-attended. We have received three applications so far for the Recreation Economic Development Director position. We'll be doing that until June 30th and hopefully we will have a new director by July, the end of July. I'm hoping that some point we'll get, you know, when we get resumes in to get someone from the rec committee and someone from the select board and have Jen sit in too when we do interviews, I think that'd be helpful. Then I just had some notes on here for stuff that was on the agenda, so that's really all I have this evening.
All right, thank you. Any select board member remarks? No? Okay. Any public comment?
Something.
All right, let's, we'll go into old business. We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna move the loader purchase discussion until we have a full board. So we'll go into planning commission solar sighting language. I lost my word. Oh, he stole it.
Sorry.
It works good too, but.
You want me to?
Yeah, please, please.
So Alicia and I did attend a regional planning meeting last night to discuss what, I mean, we don't have any language in our town plan right now that really is specific to solar sighting, so regional planning did say that we could draft a letter on what, how the town feels on the, on projects and then we could move forward with actually coming up with a better energy plan or solar sighting plan. There is some assistance with regional planning on this come July 1, which would really be the time to do it and, you know, get it done, get it done right. And I think there's maybe a person or two on the planning commission that knows something about solar that could assist with that, too, so. Yeah, I don't know what else to add to that.
At the time that they were talking about the windmills over here a few years back, there was quite a bit of interest shown and opposition toward it and there was, well, didn't we, did we or didn't we change or make any changes in the town plan?
There's very specific language against wind turbines.
I was thinking that because of that event, we did make some changes, but we still need to make more apparently.
It's pretty specific to wind. It doesn't really say much about solar.
Yeah, those were.
Actually, I think the line was that the town promotes commercial and private renewable energy projects.
Yeah. Right, I know, so I guess the only other comment from Rutland Regional was to go through our town plan again and look at specifically about aesthetics. Because there is a lot about aesthetics in our town plan, so. Yeah, I don't know how, I know you, I don't want to put you on the spot. I mean, we don't have a full board, so I don't know how much we're gonna, you know, just go into, we're not obviously gonna make any decisions.
The only reason why I'm attending is, you know, I did do some work on this, put together some language that, as much as I'd like to say I handsomely crafted this all by myself, I did some research, looked at what other towns were doing and put together something that I thought was very, you know, very business friendly and also didn't try to micromanage, you know, small business and, you know, personal use. But also this, if you read the language, it's not saying, hey, this is to stymie any solar development. This is just for the town to have a voice. And so I was able to see where the kind of language that I proposed was recognized by the PUC even though it wasn't 300 pages or full comprehensive energy plan stating guidelines and, you know, conditional steps that would need to be met. The objective behind it was just to be able to have the town be able to partake in the conversation. Because I am a solar developer, I've been doing this for eight years. I've done several projects that far exceed the one acre site or 150 KW site that I listed as being the, you know, the smallest site that could be developed without, without having any conditional review at all. So I've been on the planning commission, I just, I'm an arm wave about a year and a half now and there'd be a lot of projects that would get proposed and folks knowing what I do for a living would say, well, what do you think of that or everything else? It became very repetitious in the sense that it really doesn't, as it stands, it doesn't matter what I think of it and it doesn't matter what anybody else does either. So it's just, the reason why I'm here is just, I have an agenda, contrary to popular belief, but I'm just here to, if this topic is discussed and there's questions that arise, I wish I was at the last meeting, that I could answer any questions if I'm capable to as they arise in discussion. Hope that makes sense to everybody.
No, it does, thank you. And this is gonna be an ongoing conversation, so, you know.
Yeah.
One thing that was clear to us last night, though, is no matter what we put in for language now, it's not gonna affect what's already in the works. You know, so, you know, this is something that, and moving forward, we're not, can't do anything retroactive.
Thoroughly understand that. And also, just as an addendum to that, what, the language that I did put out isn't a watertight, foolproof, you know, should I say, paragraph that's going to guarantee that, to basically guarantee results. I can't offer that solar development relatively speaking to other, other sectors. Industry is relatively new thing. And so as to say, it would be, it's kind of the Wild West in terms of any legislation and lawmaking surrounding the issue. What I can say with certainty is that there is precedence for albeit vague language like that. The PUC recognizes that the language exists and they recognize the intent of the town by seeing that language. As opposed to having nothing. Having nothing, the conversation never begins, okay? So I was asked by the select board and by the planning commission to, to put this together. I didn't want to curtail any efforts for projects. I didn't want to say that we're against any projects because I think there's good utility projects at a large scale and there's good small projects. That being said, again, the objective wasn't to control this whole thing and, you know, walk it up, lock, stock and barrel. The objective was to be able to begin to have the conversation now so that as new projects go forward.
Right.
Then we can, if something, let me just say this, if something is egregious, okay? That because we have no language, companies come in and they wanna, they just wanna run completely roughshod over the town. And we have 2,500 residents in the parking lot, we can have a discussion. We do have a stake in the ground. So the reason for, again, the reason for the brevity of this language is to get something on the books sooner than later. So even if it isn't in the town plan, but it's recognized as going to the town plan, it's in process, it's been adopted to go in. Again, I'm talking about the gray matter in which the PUC is looking at these things and as they evolve, there is precedence for something, although it's not completely codified in every way with the town, the PUC says, ah, we understand the intent. So again, these aren't, this isn't a bill of goods, it's guaranteed.
Right.
But there's precedence that the PUC recognizes it for the intent of it. If we spend two years doing this, then the 15 projects that come in before we ever even have this language in. Falls under that. I'll by right see you later, good, bad or ugly, you know? And what I'm saying is, hey, maybe 80% of these or 90% of these are good, it's not a problem and they're conscientiously done and done responsibly and the town has no problem with it and it's viewed as being constructive.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Just like I wanted to put up a 30-unit condominium over here. There'd probably be some zoning intact that would require me to come in and talk about it a little bit and maybe, you know, get some approval before I start pounding nails.
Yep.
So I, yeah. I think we could easily do an amendment to the town plan. We've got, we have time to do it and it's just, you know, it's just a couple of hearing processes and, but, but the RPC is there to help with drafting and, you know, Barbara's done, did it when I was in Brandon and, you know, that was a pretty, pretty good comprehensive plan that really, you know, it didn't say no and it said, here's what we'd like to see, kind of thing. And that went over well and I think it's worked.
Yeah.
Which we could easily do here.
I mean, just, if I could speak freely with Brandon, I mean, I've done a little solar development in Brandon, but, and I think you could shed more weight on this because I'm on the peripheral of this stuff, is that you've had a lot of larger scale solar projects go in Brandon. And, but I do remember reading about one that was a contentious site. I'm just gonna say, they were practically building it in the middle of town, or that's what they wanted to do.
Extension, yeah.
And that wasn't successful, was it?
It was not. And actually, same situation, there was nothing done for energy at that time and that was, there were a few more factors there. There was some infrastructure on the ground there that stopped some things and, but it was very similar. And it was one of those, they were supposed to be, right, it was supposed to be pre-approved before they submitted and it wasn't, so I think that kind of squashed it. I can't remember what that was called. It was like, there was some name for it, that they had to have pre-approved sites and had done their due diligence and that didn't happen.
Supposed to verify that it was preferred site.
Exactly. So, but that's what, you know, I think a lot of towns are probably running the same thing where, oh no, what do we do now?
Right.
So, but we have resources to help that, I think, too.
Yeah.
We should use them, so.
With that being said, I'm just gonna, I want to go on the record of saying this, is that I put, I put that, that language together. It's not, not my wish or intent to see it to become far more elaborate or unnecessary, limiting or overreaching. That's not, that's not my intention behind it. So I realize that it's subject to amendment as opposed to you guys and possibly to, to other places. But I just want to sit here and say that, that the intent behind that language and I think the intent behind the planning commission endorsing it wasn't to dig straight down and start really driving the narrative on how every little solar panel.
No, no.
I don't think we want that either.
No. But, you know, last night at Rutland Regional, they did vote to write a letter of support for the one over here.
On the salvage yard.
At the salvage yard. That being like an ideal site for a solar field.
And I'm just gonna, because again, and I'm speaking objectively here, just because it's what I do for a living and it's just what I know. A letter of support is, is good for the developer. I mean, I sat in front of the Thomas here and I sat, and Joe here in 2016 and serendipitously I was here when you received a petition to sign and towns could sign a petition because they literally had no voice at all by legislation. Regional had no voice by legislation. That was the Shumon administration that wanted to clear the recesses and give investors confidence. So however, while I was here getting, seeking letter of support for the Wilbur site over by Mark Winslow's property. It's a 500 KW, it's three and a half acres. And so, but the town of Pittsburgh signed that petition back in 2016 and it gave, and it gave zoning legislative rights back to the towns and, and regional planning commissions to allow them to, to drive a narrative and have a voice in that if they chose to enact it. So that's created a lot of confusion because when I came on the planning commission a year and a half ago, I was told repeatedly, oh, we have no say, we have no choice, this is being edicted by the state. And I'm like, and I've said, yes, that was the case before 2016, about 45 times since then. I mean, honestly, you could go back, and Charlene's typed it out many, many times. So 2017 was a game changer for that. With that being said, I came in and got a letter of support, that helped. But I could still get a project approved, I could get a CPG still issued without a lot of an additional effort. Maybe it would cost another $20,000 and a little bit of legal scratch work without a CP, a letter of support. It just makes it a little easier. It's a very small hurdle.
Yeah.
So whether, whether the town gives a letter of support to a project or not when it has no language?
Yeah, no, I get it.
It's not that big of a deal, okay? So again, this is all the Wild West. This is not very old. It's been, it's been, it's only really, it started in 2008 and it really only picked up speed in like maybe 2012, 2010, 2012. So it's all relatively new and it seems to be moving very quickly.
Yeah.
So letter of support, no letter of support, that's, that's nothing to hang your hat on.
No.
So, yeah, I don't want to take up all your time, but.
No.
I got a question.
Yeah.
What would constitute a favorable site and an unfavorable site? You just said that that would be a favorable site and there's language in meetings that my site's unfavorable and I just don't understand.
Aesthetics and that it's already a brown field.
A brown field.
People live across the street and have houses and have to look at it.
I know, but we also had zero opposition when they had all their hearings and meetings here. That's another thing. So we always try to take into consideration what, you know, what the rest of the community thinks.
So take a look at the property that, that I'm using, can't be built on. Water table's too low. It really has no housing around it. It has very few visual sites. And what else could be done with that land? I'm asking you.
And there's a police academy across the street and a fire academy where there's shooting and, you know, they run drills.
If you owned the land, what would you do it? I'm just asking a question. You owned 80 acres, you're paying taxes on it, what would you do with it? Can't develop it? What are you gonna do? Just, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, guess.
So that's a very desirable site in my eyes. That piece of property, you're taking away from a place that could be used for industry. You're taking it out of it and you're putting solar panels there. That's a very undesirable site in my eyes.
I think they can because it's.
Yeah, it's because it's a brown field, so.
You can continue a salvage yard there. I mean, it's.
They still are going today.
Cars need to be dismantled.
They still are. It's not, it's not being taken over, they're just adding it to their.
All right, so the potential of growth will be minimized there. People will be able to see it. That's all sand there. I mean, that's.
That was the only place, there was a short spot from the Pittsburgh Trail.
Yeah.
But, yeah, and that's, and I don't want to speak for everyone, but I know like the, it's, if my opinion about preferred, when we get a lot of opposition, then I have to consider what, you know, take into consideration.
How many, how much opposition, how many persons or families oppose this? Just out of curiosity, because I don't know.
You mean legally? Legally, there's four.
Four, so in the entire town.
But that's, we've heard a lot of other opposition.
Can I just add something that might make, I mean, it's, you know, you look at zoning as very similar. You know, as long as your neighbor's fine with what you're doing.
Right.
Nobody hears anything. You know, but the minute you decide that you want to put something in that your neighbor doesn't like.
Not my backyard.
They can appeal it, you know, and that's, that's the process that's set in place. And then the town has to hear it at that point.
Right.
You know, and I think, you know, it goes to a point where, you know, that's sort of why the boards like the zoning adjustment or whatever we have here for, you know, development review or whatever, like, yeah, right. And, but, you know, the adjoining landowners have that sort of right to appeal that decision if it's not favorable. Then it goes through the other venues like, you know, development review. And it could go to environmental court and then the court would decide it. So sometimes it's frustrating.
No, but I, my point is we gotta be careful because what may be a desirable site, okay? You may be taking a industry away. I mean, if you have very tillable land, is that a desirable site for solar? I don't think it is. I think you can grow food on it.
Right.
Okay? But somebody else may think it's desirable. I mean, these are very important questions. You know, a roof of a building to me is a desirable spot for solar, okay? To somebody else, it may not be.
Right.
So what are the criterias here? I mean, we, we got a piece of property in, in Pittsburgh, okay, that nothing can be done on. Nothing, zero, nothing. Except maybe, you can't graze cattle really because nobody will give you electricity. None of your neighbors will give you electricity. You can't power a fence. What could be done on that piece of property? Because a person just continuously pay taxes? Can't build on it? Can't do anything? So what can you, so that's not desirable?
It's not up to me.
No, I'm just asking a question. I'm asking a question.
No, I get it, that is subjective, that, you know, I get your point.
So where's the language? I mean, who's gonna determine what's the desirable and what's undesirable?
May I ask how, if there was opposition to the Route 3 across from Conway's?
There was.
Was there opposition to that also?
Mm-hmm.
I just don't hear that brought up.
I think there's been opposition to everyone.
There's been, the only objections, the only, so here, at the salvage yard and the one off of Parker.
Parker.
Because that's in a pit.
And Adams Road was objected to as well.
Oh, God. Vigorously, vigorously.
That one's still got so much.
That still is, yeah.
That's still.
Okay, I just was curious if, you know.
Yeah. I mean, I, so I think, you know, I mean, and I don't want to speak for everybody, but typically what, it's aesthetics. You know what I mean? Like, so a salvage yard that's already, you know, not pretty, you have pits, you know, you know what I mean? That have already, they've been kind of degraded, the ground has been degraded. People tend to not care about that.
So I have a question. So can you show me where you're guaranteed the privilege of sight in the US Constitution, the state constitution, in any, in any law where your site is a guaranteed right?
Well, and I don't know off the top of my head, but there must be something in the Vermont State Constitution if adjoining property owners have a right to chime in. I don't know if that's true or not, but.
They could chime in, but there's no guaranteed a right. But people do have property rights. People do, that's a, that's a constitutional right. I mean, that's a right that's protected.
No, I do want to hear that.
Okay, so we're taking people's property rights away because somebody's complaining about their site. That is not a protected right. So we really need to think about what we're doing.
But their property values are also tied up in, in that.
I don't know, they just appraised the house, Rebecca Davenport's house for $244,000. Then no solar is going in and it's 900 square feet.
Yeah.
To me, that's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money for.
I don't think it's hurting that property value.
Yeah.
So that's, that's objective, too.
And that'll be probably the best view, besides for John and Barb Carreras, who's in their backyard.
Right. I just don't know, you know, I mean.
Just asking.
The town should want to buy the property if somebody, if they, they don't want to put solar there. I mean, what is somebody supposed to do? They have a piece of property they're paying taxes on and nobody lets them do anything on it.
So I think that's one reason why we have the PUC in Vermont, to hear, you know, your, your side, you know, why you want to do this project, the opposition, you know, what the town has or doesn't have for, you know, it's like any other court case, really. Like, they want to look at all the facts and, and.
So I didn't, I didn't seek out solar.
No.
They seeked out me because it was a desirable spot. A very desirable spot.
We didn't shop for it.
I didn't shop for it. A person knocked on my door.
No, we know. Some acreage that they're knocking on people's doors.
Yeah, they.
And another thing I want to tell you guys, that I also shopped it against a Vermont solar company and they couldn't compete price-wise. So it wasn't like, it went elsewhere just because it went elsewhere. It was offered to a Vermont company that was capable of building it and they couldn't, they couldn't touch the, the price, okay? And also, the neighbors were all contacted by Next Era. Every single one of them that had a visual impact of that got knocked on their door and was spoken to before it became public.
So there was.
I want that to go on the record because that was stated that, that didn't happen. It did happen.
There was stated that it didn't happen, so.
Right. That needs to be corrected.
Well, I'm just gonna, just gonna add too that any adjoining property owner has party status. He would have gotten the 45-day notice. There's no ambiguity. As a developer, if I forgot an adjacent property owner on the mailing list, oh, the whole thing could just get kicked out. So I mean, there's no ambiguity as to whether the adjacent property owners received the full, full document of the 45-day notice. And again, I've no horse in this race, but that is, that is what happened, that is the way it is.
I just know the town wasn't notified until after some stuff happened, so I don't know if it's, you know?
Yeah.
It's possible the property was.
If that's the case, then that was, that was.
It wasn't up to us to do.
Oh, no, I didn't, no, not, no.
One of the things that bothered me is the two people that were, that are rejecting this product strongly, both said, which was not true, that the property is wet there, okay? And the reason that bothers me is because, number one, if it is, if it was wetlands, okay, which is not because they wouldn't allow it, it would be a desirable spot. What else are you gonna do with it? So they want it on farmland? They want to take our food away? I don't understand. Where do they want these things? They just don't want it in their backyard, right?
One of them also drove an electric car for many years, so again, it's like a little ironic.
Right. And nobody asked him, how are we gonna get rid of the lithium battery? But he's very concerned in how the panels are gonna be.
So if, if I may, so brown fields reclaim, reclaim that two, three sites.
Are you saying brown field?
Brown.
Brown.
Yeah, I have a retainer, so I.
That's okay, I can't hear that good, so.
No, I've had from one here, too. So, but yeah, brown fields, which, you know, super fun sites, if you, if you will. When the state drew this up and drew, drew up the criteria for, for preferred sighting, they, they specifically outlined in 2017, brown fields reclaim sites, they're preferred, so, that are preferred. So that's, the state has driven that agenda, just, just for, just for clarity.
Joe, did you have?
Yeah, one thing that has bothered me with this proposal over here behind the junkyard is they have requested that they can make a deal with the town to cut a good swath of trees behind, behind their land on what is owned by the town to get.
The sun.
To get the sun. And I understand why and all that. But that, that bothers me a little because that's an encumbrance on that property. I'd like to say from now to the end of time, but that's pretty long. I mean, I don't know how long. If them solar panels were to leave that area, would that automatically go right back to the landowner? He can do as he damn pleases? But the town will not be able to have any trees on this certain swath of ground as long as it, some solar panels there. That's my understanding. I may be wrong on that.
Well, you did, you did.
And that does bother me.
Site visit, didn't you?
No.
I went.
You went.
Yeah, so we, yeah, we went on the site visit, Joe. They were gonna leave a barrier between the trail. They're, they were going to leave a barrier between the trail. They were only taking out some right behind.
But they were going to give us so many dollars.
Oh, they would have paid to do it, got it.
No, they paid.
So many dollars, that's, doesn't impress me at all.
No, not a lot of money.
The fact that there's an encumbrance on that property, that is the town's, that may or may not forbid the town from doing something else with that property down the line.
It's still ours. I mean, it doesn't change, doesn't change our boundary.
The encumbrance will be on it.
Plus it's.
That bothers me.
Isn't, haven't we been selectively cutting up there for years anyways? Isn't that what the town has, has part of that set aside for?
Yeah, they've logged it.
For, so we've occasionally logged it for money anyways in the past, the town.
But this is like a clear cut.
I'm not.
No, they were leaving a good-sized barrier, because I asked, because I walked those trails. I asked how much it was, but.
But there is a.
Yeah, it wasn't going to be a complete clear cut. But anyway, um, alright. We're, this is going to be an ongoing conversation. Does anyone else have anything? So I don't want to cut anybody off, though, if anybody has anything else to say, otherwise, I guess, we're, because we're going to continue this conversation with a full board anyways, so.
I just think the language should, should define what a preferred property is.
Okay.
And rather than just leave it up to discretion of a bunch of people sitting around what they think a preferred property is, it should, it should be spelled out.
Yep.
Don't leave it objectional.
No, I, I hear that. And also remember that this, this, whatever language we decide on has to go through two hearings where everybody in town will have a, have a chance to weigh in on that. So it's not like it's just going to be just the five of us, you know, so.
Yeah.
No, there'll be hearings of it.
Right. Well, it's not going to affect me, so it's just going to affect things going forward. I just, I just, I'm a strong believer in property rights and I get, I get very upset when property rights are being violated. Especially when people claim that their rights are being violated that aren't protected. You can turn your head, you don't have to look that way. You know? People can walk, in the state of Vermont, you can walk around naked. You're not protected from seeing that person.
Yeah.
You look the other way. It's not a protected right.
Let's hope nobody in town takes a, takes that.
Sometimes do.
I think that's just a braille girl, right? I hear that goes on there a lot.
Killing her, they.
On every occasion.
Alright, anything else before we move on? Anybody else have anything? Alright. Um, so ARPA discussion, which we're also not going to go into detail because we don't have full members, oh, yeah.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, don't feel free to, don't feel like you need to.
No.
Thank you. Yep, thanks. You too.
Thanks for coming.
So yeah, so not a deep discussion about ARPA because there's only three of us, but I think Dave has just a couple updates or.
Yeah, I mean, I could just, so, the library did come to me last week and ask what the board was deciding on some of the ARPA requests and I didn't know, so, um, we had this list that Ann had put together at some point that shows like some of the requests or what some things.
It's probably the same list I got.
Yep.
Oh, I've, I've done some.
Did Shelley tell you if the door replacement has changed? Because I know they did just, she did just have somebody come in and, um, sand and stain or polyurethane, but is that just a temporary fix and it still needs a?
They've taken the doors down and they're actually pulling them apart and redoing them.
Alright, well, then, yeah, we can take that.
I think it's about 10 grand to do the whole thing.
Jeez.
Well, they had to, like, rebuild some pieces, so they were going to make some new ones and stuff.
Alright.
So there's that list and then the other thing that, well, actually, that's, I said, well, no, we'll get to that one in a minute, sorry. But I just wanted to put that in front of you guys again, you know, that there was a question from the library because they were looking to try to maybe paint, which I don't even see it on this one.
There was no painting on the library, no. There was just roof, windows.
Not the library, I'm sorry, not the library.
Oh, the Historical Society.
Oh, Historical, yeah.
Yeah, there's paint on the Historical Society, so just seeing what was going on with it, but, um.
I would like to see the.
Honestly, I think that'll probably fly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, they're not asking for an awful lot.
They do a lot for this town with a very teeny budget, so.
20,000 they were asking for, so.
I got a feeling I can't speak for the full board, but my vote would be to fund the Historical Society.
Yeah.
Alright, so I guess for next meeting, when we have a full board, we'll have, we'll have those, um, do you still have your list, Joe? For, I know it's been a long time since we got it. We could get copies for everyone.
There's one in this package.
Oh, okay.
Well, there's one each package. This wish list we're speaking about for projects.
The ARPA, yeah.
ARPA, yeah.
I've got it here. I was looking at it earlier.
Okay, okay.
Here it is, right here. I, I, when it comes to this wish list, I'm going to call it for all the good things that sore lines and everything that needs to be done, should be done, could be done, uh, that's a big pill to swallow all in one, one time.
Oh, well, we're not going to, okay, all of it.
No.
That's just.
So I think maybe.
We don't even have that much.
Like, like the, the library, uh, and I'll use that as just, as one example, uh, maybe rather than ask for all of this one year, maybe it could be spread out. We would agree that, yes, it needs to be done and we're willing to do it, but we're not going to give them the money all one year.
I think the ARPA has to be spent by next year, Joe.
Pick the most important parts of it, do that, and move on to maybe over three years, five years, whatever.
So it has to be spent by next year. There's, there's guidelines with the ARPA money.
Well, then that kind of changes that picture.
Yes, it does.
And I may be wrong, but, uh, I'd like to see some, some effort put into bids to get this work done. Now, an example of going back, when the covered bridge got busted a number of years ago down here, Harvey's truck hit it, they made a big issue out of that and that cost a lot of money. It should have been a, I, I met with Sean Erickson down there and looked at it right after it happened. The dump box was still wedged in there and, and, and I said to Sean, I said, Jesus, I said, go on up to the mill and get some pieces, we had them, that were long enough to go across, put them in there on, as a temporary fix, get that box out of there, get the traffic flowing again. God, that's a great idea, Sean said. Well, then the next thing, you know, the president, in order to get, uh, state money, it had to meet the preservation guidelines. And that, the preservation guidelines, there's only about a half a dozen people in the state of Vermont that qualify to do that work. McKernan just came onto the project, or onto that qualification at that time and, and I'm pretty sure they're the ones that did fix the bridge.
So the.
But the library's the same thing. They want you to have one of about five or six people in the whole state that are eligible. That's kind of nonsense. We had some carpenters right here in town, Mark Hayes was one of them, he did a lot of work for me. They could have fixed that covered bridge with maybe a, a little bit of help from the highway crew and it wouldn't have cost but a few hundred dollars and the bridge would have been just as good as it is today.
So Joe, I am on the library board and while it is a historic, on the historical registry and so, so, you know, you couldn't just like tear off that roof and put an asphalt one on. We, we use, we use local roofers and electricians and plumbers already and that's not, but we don't have to hire somebody like special to store those stuff.
I don't think that you can get any outside money unless it's being done by certified his.
Not with the library.
Well, I, and I'm saying this because they had some chimney work done quite a few years ago. And that south chimney, it was $22,000 if my memory serves me right, was spent to redo that south chimney alone. And that was done by somebody who met the criteria of the his, of the preservation people. And I'm sure that could have been done. I want, I would feel much better to have a half a dozen bids on something, a job like that and.
Well, haven't they, these people found a bid, right?
So they already have a bid. That 50,000 not, didn't, that wasn't a made-up number.
That's on bid. How many more have they got?
Can I say something?
Have you, no, have you tried to get a bid lately?
I would like to know and, and maybe you can tell me.
Yeah.
Because you're on the board. How many bids did they, how many bids did they send out?
Um, probably 10 or 15. Shelley is really good about reaching out and calling everybody. It's hard to get, we just, we just waited, I can't, we just waited for, um, we just had the heat pump moved and it took, I don't even know how long it took just to get one person to come out and look at it and then get, it's just, the bids, same thing with the Historical Society. They called a ton of people to get a painting bid and.
There, again, the, the work for the Historical Society, I'm all for it. It's a great building. Needs to be kept up.
Mm-hmm.
How many bids have they, have they received to get that work done?
No, I just, I just, so Ann, Ann Pelkey has reached out to many people to get bids and I think they only got one or two, but that's like not the fault of them. They're.
No, I'm. Joe, Joe, we had the same problem with the first responsibility to get somebody to bid on the, the siding. Nobody would bid.
Dave brought up tonight, you've had the problem with the auditors not getting bids. So it's everybody.
Right, so that's, the bids aren't the issue.
There are a couple of things that we might want to look into with the ARPA money because technically it's federal money and it might have to follow the federal procurement or ours. If, it depends on what, and I can certainly look that up to see how procurement is. You know, like, if, if we borrow money from the state or the Fed, we have to follow procurement policy.
Yep.
And, you know, some, and it depends, like, if you're doing historic work where you're using a grant, you absolutely have to follow. And some of them say follow your own, but have documentation where you did it.
Well, that's the thing. That's what the library's had to do is document, but that's it.
But I, but I understand where like Alicia and Tom are coming from too, that there's, there's a thing, you know, like, we, with paving, you don't have enough contractors anymore to do a, you know, to do a, a really like formal bid process because, you know, there's only going to be two showing up. But let me, let me look and see what we have to do for ARPA because it might have to, everything might have to be bid out.
I know. And like I said, we're going to, this will be a more, this is going to be a more in-depth conversation when we have the whole board anyways, Joe.
When the Cooley Bridge, I don't, well, you, you weren't on the board at that time, but when the Cooley Bridge was re-sheathed, the outside boards were all put on, they did a lot of work on that. There was a qualification that the boards that went on the outside of that.
Had to be a certain.
They had to be grade stamped.
Yep.
And a certain, certain specifications. Select board had a price from our mill. And we give them a price for what they needed and it was a small percentage of what those other boards would have cost. And, and the select board, I happened to be right, right after I got on the board, I recused myself from it because we were involved in supplying the wood, but, uh, they decided you either use the boards that the select board were willing to buy for them or won't put nothing on it, so that's the way they went. But there's, there's some ridiculous spending going on just because of some foolish, uh, qualifications that have to be met sometimes.
I don't think any of us disagree, but that's what the state has in place for getting some of these monies with the covered bridges in particular. Even if we decided that it was cheaper to do it ourselves, I don't think we're even allowed to. And if we are, I think it, doesn't it take us out of any kind of insurance? We have no more insurance on our bridge or anything, so whether we like it or not, it's just the system that's in place.
You may be right.
You know?
I could be wrong, but, uh, there are times when I think that you can do it on your own, save a hell of a lot of money rather. This salt shed we've just built here a few years ago cost this town a lot more than it needed to. They went round and round.
Sure did.
They went round and round and Tom, you sat here just like I did and you know all about it.
That was, yep. It went from, from like 200,000 to what, 900 or some damn stupid.
They did a study to begin with and then somebody said, well, you know what, this is built on a dump. Well, then they had to go and start all over again, start digging.
Alright, Joe, no offense, but I think we're going to move on from, because we could complain about how all that works all day.
Some examples.
I know, I know.
Thanks for hearing them.
Um, okay, we have, um, so the, one of the additions to old business was the, um, is this the first payout from that block grant? I don't know. I don't know if it matters, but we have, so we do have the CB, uh, CD BG.
Is this for the village farm?
Yeah.
We've signed, there's one board before that day.
So this is, uh, we need a vote for the funds transfer for the amount of $9,680.28.
I'll make the motion.
I'll.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright. New business, Bridge 108 Waterman.
So, um, I was sent the updated probable engineer's opinion of probable cost to replace
So, um, I was sent the updated probable engineer's opinion of probable cost to replace the water line on Bridge 108, um-
That's the bridge by the mobile station, so everybody's-
Yeah, this is seventy years, actually.
So, everybody know what we're talking about.
I did show you the original agreement that was in here, that was done in 2016, that showed the cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and as you see, it's gone up to four hundred and fifteen. Um, I wanted to get that in front of you folks, 'cause I think we're gonna have to have a conversation here at some point, sooner than later, on how we want to fund these water and sewer upgrades or replacements when, when the segments come. So, um, you know, the bridge, it's, it's, I'm told the bridge is going out to bid in a week or two. They're hoping to get the, the temp in, but there is a pending, there's pending litigation, so they don't know how that's going to be, what's gonna happen, so.
So, are they not paying for any, are we totally on the hook for that?
We're on the hook for the water and sewer and everything.
And everything.
I thought they were gonna help us with where it crossed the br-
For sewer, they're helping us, 'cause they're putting the sleeves in, but we're not putting pipe and, and they, but, that's, that's on us. So, I'm doing a little research to see if we can make some changes on that, and I, there'll be more to come on that, I think.
Okay.
Talking to some of my folks, friends at Federal Highway and VTRN, so we'll see if maybe we can come up with a better deal, but I just wanted to let you folks know that that's, you know, that's the cost we're looking at, and of course, the longer this project takes, the more this pipe is gonna go up, and-
We know what we could offer them. That would make it a sweet deal, but we'll keep that in-
So, so, there might be some options here, and, but, let me, once I get like confirmation, I'll certainly let you know, but that's where we're at with that, so.
All right, thank you for this.
So, it looks like-
That bad news. All right, um, consider Otter Creek Engineering for Plains Road Project.
So, Sean and Tyler have actually been out, they went out and camera Plains Road a few weeks back, um, to, to see how the lines were, and it's, most of it's old clay tile, has a lot of sags in it. We did talk with, with Otter Creek Engineering about, you know, what the replacement cost would be on that, um, which we have the engineering services here, and I, I believe the cost to replace the whole thing was six, it was like six hundred thousand, I think.
Five twenty-five?
I, I think that was the one-
Four hundred quarter.
That was the one that was done last fall.
Oh.
So, I mean, that's not for the, the engineering services is way less than that, obviously, I think it's like thirty thousand dollars for, for engineering here.
Okay.
Um, that's one that we would like to discuss, and then ARPA discussion tool on how to fund that, 'cause that's one that really needs to be dealt with, it's, it's-
That's, that line has been bad for over thirty years.
The pitch is poor, it's sagging like crazy, and-
Okay.
How much outside financial help do we get, or don't you have any idea?
Well, we could probably get it, I mean, we're gonna have to either bond or borrow for some, some or most of it.
Well, see, that's, you're talking to bond, I think, that's-
Yeah, and that's, that's why I'm hoping we could have a conversation later about maybe how to cover all of this.
You know, you're talking bond. You're talking a million six hundred thousand on just those water and sewer.
Yeah.
But, that's a bond, there's no question.
Okay.
And I think we should look at what we could do with segment two and three at the same time.
All right.
Well, it's all the same.
Yeah, and then we done with it.
All the guys together, so.
All right, we'll continue that, I guess.
Okay.
But there'd be federal monies, right, on, on the segment?
We don't have any money currently.
We, we don't, we don't get any for water and sewer on that, that's the problem. They're only doing, we're on the hook for our water and sewer, right now.
Yeah, but there must be some, some, some help out there with the Fed somewhere.
Well, we could, we could apply for USDA-
Grants, there's gotta be some grants out there.
USDA does debt forgiveness, depending on what your, you know, they base a lot of stuff on census, what your, what your, um, if your poverty level in town, what, how many, what your uses are. So, there are some options, and I think once we get our hard numbers together, we could have that discussion easily. Um, do you want me to sit on this, this engineering services one for Plains Road until we get full board to?
I think, I think so.
Yeah, how much was that?
Thirty-two thousand.
Yeah, I think we're out of wait for the full board.
Okay.
It's only two weeks away.
Yeah.
Okay.
That won't matter when we're another.
No. Um, next, we have the Mamie Keith Coin Drop request, which is for, um, the American Cancer Society, and we might need to reach out to them and ask them to reconsider their date that they've requested, 'cause it's for this weekend. And the following weekend, we already have the library coin drop is already scheduled, so we, I think we need to just reach out to them, have them come up with another date.
Yeah, because there is a new policy on coin drops.
Right.
That we did, so.
Yes, so.
And I believe we have to have thirty days notice.
Thirty days for, yeah, for us to hear it, and we're just hearing about it now, so.
Unfortunately.
Could be a month.
Yeah, so we'll just have to, um, will you just reach out to them, Dave?
Certainly will.
And just ask them to please find a different date, and then-
There ain't nothing else scheduled a month away, is there?
No, we only have two scheduled so far, and, um, Kelly remembers Labor Day, right, for Humane Society.
That was Labor Day, Columbus Day.
Funny, a guy named-
Yeah, we'll just have to check the dates, and we really should, because last year, remember, we double booked?
And I, I think-
That was not good.
In the policy, isn't there something about you can only have so many in a month?
It's eight a year.
Eight a year, so, the five a year?
Time, well, five coin drops to a hell between May first and October.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
I felt really bad last year, we double booked, so.
It was eight, it was five.
Exactly, yep.
Okay, um, credit card policy.
So, we've had some discussion here and there about switching the debit cards to credit cards, and I think maybe now we should really consider it. Um, one is, there's a lot of debit cards out there, it gets a little confusing with who spent what, even if someone spends something on the same day and invoices come, it, it can screw up the account. Um, done some research on the credit cards, there's actually better, um, coverage if we have fraud on it, with credit versus debit.
Yep.
Um, this is a policy that, this is another VLCT one that we've looked at, Helen and Ann and I worked on it, there were just a couple things we wanted to change about, um, when invoices get here, 'cause we, you know, we, I really, personally, I think we need one card, and that we could easily have signed out, and that keeps, you know.
Yeah.
Um, but we are seeing, you know, a lot of stuff we can buy online now that's, you know, for rec or, you know, even supplies, and I think, I think Helen says something like Staples isn't honoring, they're, like, they're not doing the cards anymore for, she said something about our Staples cards going away, so we could get rid of all of like, any of those store cards, and just have this one, which I think would be easier for accounting to.
Okay.
So, I did, I did get, um, information from Bar Harbor, I had to think of what name that bank was, on, on their, they ha, actually have a municipal card that's specific for that, so, um, yeah, I was just, you know, I was wondering if the board would consider getting rid of those debit cards and going with credit cards, credit card.
Does it create a hardship for anybody, or not really?
No.
I think so.
No, you know, I talked with Sean about it, and wastewater, you know, if they had an emergency for the weekend, I mean, we could get a card to him, it wouldn't be a big deal. I mean, we still have, we still have accounts at certain stores and stuff, too, so, I don't know, like Ace is one of them, which, you know, if they needed something really quick, and, or we have credit, I mean, if they needed to get, you know, like, a coupler or something for pipe, you know, they're just gonna go get it in the company.
Yeah, but you have a credit card.
Yeah, or we have them on hand.
Towns are good for it.
Credit cards, credit cards that, in other words, say, each department had had a credit card, you could still control it that way, rather than debit card. I'm pretty sure, 'cause you can have your cards numbered, so you know who did it.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking that might be the better thing, rather than have just one card, that might be a problem, I don't know. Where, you, you need control, there's no question about that, but, you know, that's just my suggestion.
Yeah.
Depending on how many you think you need, I mean, you know.
Well, but, let me, let me, let's give that some thought, but-
Give that some thought.
You know, like-
I'm sure you can have more than one credit card tied to that account.
Right, you know, one thing is like, we see Sean and Chad every day, you know, so it's not a big deal.
I'm thinking of weekends, or-
So, like, hey, we gotta purchase or something, we gotta do now, like, okay, you know, whatever, so.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I think if weekends, if we had an emergency situation, one of us would be here to unlock the building.
Should be, yeah.
You know, um, just thinking protection on it.
Well, yeah.
So, um, yeah, and I don't know if you had a chance to look over the policy, I mean, it's pretty basic, it's, you know, no frivolous spending, you're responsible for, you know, the card and, um, documentation.
Right.